All right. All right. Evening, everybody. Uh, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. At the Joint Meeting of the Plan Development Subcommittee and Town Council Meeting Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, 6:30 PM. And you're in the Veterans Room. Agenda. The roll call first. DeeDee?
Here.
Uh, Council Dow?
Yeah.
Council Lozo? And Catherine will be, uh, late. She had to call them. Item number two, Consider Accept Plan Development Meeting Minutes of July 7th, 2021. Can I get a motion or a second, please?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have any copies or what?
Yeah, actually, I have one left. Because there wasn't one in my bag. That's what happened. When do you get it done? Today, this morning? Been doing a lot of meeting minutes here lately. All right. Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. A second. All right. Any corrections, amendments, anything like that to it? Okay. All those in favor? Pose. Item number three, Review Citizen Request for Dolores Baruchel to Serve as Citizen Member of the Plan and Development Subcommittee effective immediately through July 31st, 2022. Ethics of Good Standing. Entertained Motion to Vote to Recommend to Council for Confirmation.
Baruchel.
You can make the motion. You can make a second motion.
I can make a second. Okay. I'll do the second then.
All right. First of all, I just want to say thank you, DeeDee, for volunteering again. I mean, you've been a big asset to the PND and, uh, from the old days of over at their redevelopment authority, but I want to thank you for volunteering again. I appreciate it. I know your time is valuable to you and you got a lot going on, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Same thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. All those in favor? Vipstain? You know, Vipstain. Okay. 2-0-1. Uh, item number four, Citizen Request, Review Citizen Request for Catherine Bernadette to Serve as Citizen Member of the Plan and Development Subcommittee effective immediately through July 31st, 2022. Ethics of Good Standing. Entertained Motion to Vote to Recommend to Council for Confirmation.
I'll make the motion.
I just want to say thank you to Catherine again. Um, I know she's really, really busy as far as, uh, at the hospital. Last year was her first year doing this. Taking a leap of faith in that, and she did a very good job. She always attended and, uh, we really appreciate her efforts as well, taking the time out of her busy day. Any discussion?
Same thing. I want to say thank you to Catherine for volunteering, so.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. All those in favor? Pose. Reserve. Item number, general, uh, sorry, agenda item number five, Review Discuss the Withdrawal Request by Hardline Heat Treating to Be Removed From the Tax Incremental, I'm sorry, Incremental Financing or TIF. And State Credits Approved for 73 through 81 Ashland Avenue. Entertained Motion to Vote to Recommend that Council Approve the Withdrawal Requests.
Baruchel.
Can I make the second?
All right.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. Oh, I didn't. Oh. I was gonna start off.
Yeah, I didn't know. No. Oh, I didn't know.
Oh, I was gonna go first and just kind of explain again.
Yes.
Why? You threw me for a loop there.
Yeah.
The long story short is Hardline, um, sort of went in a different direction from where they were, from what their, uh, TIF was originally approved for. Basically, the improvements that they were doing to 73 to 81 Ashland, um, they weren't doing those, but instead they purchased 134 Ashland Avenue, and they're doing renovations to that building instead. So it's just because of the terms of the TIF and how it works. It was nothing to do with them, you know, not being able to follow through with the, you know, what they, I believe they had said something like it was a million dollar process or something like that, but instead they purchased another building and are doing the work in there instead.
Okay.
So they still have that, uh, 73 to 81 Ashland Ave. Now they also have 134 Ashland Ave, so.
But I remember we were buying that piece of property, yeah.
Yeah, so they're, it's just because of the way that their expansion went versus what they were approved for.
Okay.
So they may come back in the future, um, you know, to when they get the terms, you know, of everything kind of worked out and things, but for now, um, because they couldn't honor the terms of the original TIF, this is their best course of action.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
No, I, sorry, I guess, yeah, my concern was where they live in town, but they're not. They're invested in town and just changed.
You steal all the work that's done, right?
Well, yeah, so I just Googled. So that's DePietre's old building?
Yes.
Yes.
The D and D welding?
D and D welding. They bought all that property. And the other property they bought was Shugd, right?
No, Shugd's.
That was.
That was that.
That was.
I thought they had an agreement with. Was it?
All right. Like, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it was the same person's property.
The one on the corner from North Woodstock. No, that was Shugd's.
Oh, was it?
Yeah. That, um, Mike Hart.
Hartlo?
Hartlo. Yeah. He purchased that, and that's, uh, been approved through the planning board for self-storage. Seven, um, buildings are going in there.
Council Steves?
Um, I think Eric just answered the question I was gonna ask, which was if they were planning on coming back for another TIF for the other property. So that they might. Is that what you meant, Eric?
Uh, yeah, I don't know for sure, but they may. It wouldn't surprise me.
Council Markety?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was a 10-year TIF that they signed in 2018, and they got a 100% tax abatement for the first two years. Now, what happens to that? Do we get that back? Or is that, is, without prejudice, does that mean we don't get any of that money back?
No, I think without prejudice means that they want to reserve the right to reapply for a TIF in the future.
Okay, so then what happens to this?
Um, I believe they have to pay it back, but I'm not 100% sure, to be completely honest with you. TIPS are something that are sort of a mystery to me.
And this was something that was done before I even got on to Town Council. I don't think I've ever seen the contract. So if I could get a copy of the contract, I'm going to look over it. Just for my own curiosity, what's in this contract?
I can email it to you.
All right.
If you'd like.
I would recommend maybe even have it in the packets for, uh, at the next Town Council meeting too as well.
Yeah.
Just so that they have it to see. Yes.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the previous speaker. My understanding, I think, when we approve the TIF, and I may be wrong, and that's why they could get some verification on this, the 100% abatement was on whatever new construction they did, not their existing tax bill. So anything that was within that property that was already taxable, so they didn't get 100% abatement on all taxes. It was just whatever, whatever they agreed to build out was what was the 100% abatement for X number of years. So, and that was explained to us by, uh, Assessor Canoyer at the time, that yes, they're still responsible for, even going forward, that 10-year period, whatever their tax bill was for the existing footprint was still at the regular tax, but if they built whatever they said they were gonna build, that was with 100%. So I don't think they did the building that they said they were gonna originally do, did they?
Correct. No, I think they were going to do an addition.
Right. They were gonna do addition.
Yeah, and they, instead they purchased another building.
Right. So I think that we're not, and that's why there's no prejudices, because they didn't do their original construction that they wanted to do, so therefore there was nothing for the 100% abatement. They still paid their regular taxes within the, whatever the footprint was of their existing assessment. But he can confirm that with, uh, with the assessment, but I believe that's how it worked.
I'm gonna throw something real quick, just off of what, um, Council Joe Van stated. The, uh, it's all the same that we were briefed on. If I'm not mistaken, the TIF has to get, the state has to be notified that construction has worked or it's started or it's completed before the TIF even takes effect, because it's based on what was actually built, and then that's the percentage that it works over time. Uh, but again, the property tax is the property tax of the existing building that's there. So, yeah, that's the same brief I remember, uh, extensively from Will Canoyer. I'm sorry, Council Markety, did you have any other questions?
Well, the only other question I have is that part of the agreement was that they hire Southridge residents, and I just don't know, did they do that? Did they hire a certain percentage of Southridge residents? I mean, now I'm not required to do that anymore. I would mind me out of question.
I, I don't know, to be completely honest with you, but they would add them. You know.
I think Council Joe Van can see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the same thing. So they had to, once you finish that project, it's the same with, uh, United Lands. We gave a TIF to United Lands, they were supposed to, but their construction is done, so I was gonna ask, maybe we could get a brief on that.
I checked with him, and saw it.
You know, so it was once, once you complete the project, uh, you have to commit to hiring those. So because they didn't do any construction, they're not bound by that commitment to, uh, hire.
If I'm not mistaken, again, the state has to be notified that they started, because it's, it's the state's approval.
Right.
Um, if, and then every year, that was something that I worked with Rosemary. I remember that. I said, I want to report every single year once they start. I want to be notified when it starts, and then every year, because they're required, like, United Lands, I had reached out to, uh, Mr. Ramsay about where are we at with this? It hasn't even started, because we know the construction was completed. They're required to keep, I think, 126 jobs. So, uh, it may not be a bad idea just to send both TIFs out for all the councils to kind of refresh everybody's memory.
I can send out.
It's been, it's been a few years, so. But, but if not, if the town receives a report from the state, the town can say, that's enough, we're not giving you the TIF anymore, withdraw from it if you're not hiring the certain amount of people they're required to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Isn't there the door recycling metal there in that place, in the back?
No, that's a different, different business in the back.
Is it owned by, by one person? Because that used to be with that building before.
They're in the, the front building. The, the back is, uh.
SNS? Is it SNS?
It is SNS, yes. Thank you. Yeah, it's a different, different owner now.
So it was divided and sold to a different owner?
Yes.
Can we not vote on that till we got more information? Because, you know, TIF in 7381, I don't know anything about it. I'm not gonna vote on that.
I would recommend sending off the TIF to all the councils, so the councils can take a look at what the TIF was required.
I'm not gonna, to be honest with you, you know, you give me a paper saying, do you need TIF on 7381?
Yes.
You know, I, I don't like it, to be honest, you know? So I'm, just if we can, you know, hold on, not say yes or no, till we receive the package saying, it's specific what they're doing, what is this for, and all that.
Right.
So we don't.
I'll make a quick comment. I, I don't have a problem going up to the Town Council, because I think we can get that information prior to the Town Council, but, uh, you know, I'll be voting in favor to move it forward.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, that's fine.
Did you have anything else? Council Dow didn't want to.
So I, I understand Council Dow's position about, and I think I would feel uncomfortable if we're issuing a TIF, but here we're rescinding the TIF. So they're not gonna have any tax credit breaks or anything. They're saying, I don't want it anymore. So we're rescinding it, it's their property, they do whatever they want, we get whatever the assessment taxes. So we're not giving them any benefits, so, um, uh, I feel comfortable doing it that way, because on the flip side, they said, I want this tax increment financing, this, this is only property, and this is all that's theirs, like, okay, I would say, wait, wait a minute, what are you doing? What are the, because I think the other companies, when they came in for their TIF, uh, like, uh, those, they had to present their plans. Hey, this is, this is how much we're gonna build out, we're gonna commit to this many jobs and all this. This is, they're just saying, hey, we're not gonna do it anymore, we're not gonna build out there, we, we went in a different direction. So here, town, you're gonna get all your taxes that you assessed to me anyway. So I feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, again, if this was a, a new TIF, we'd be bringing you scads of information. You probably have too much you wouldn't.
But we're gonna, in the future, for either receiving or give back, a little more detail, you know? Cause we used to understand what happened in the past. You know, like, I wasn't there, I don't know what you guys are talking about. I know it's good for the town to get money back, but still, I'd like to know what that for. Thank you.
Of course.
Council Steves?
Yeah, I have one quick question. As I, I may be remembering this wrongly, but wasn't there also an aspect of this TIF that involved installation of new equipment? Was that only in this section they were building, or was that also in the existing section?
It was. No, it's, our last report to us was that they hadn't put in, they, I'm sorry. I'm trying to remember. There was something in our reports that they did, uh, put in equipment. It was a hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars of equipment. The TIF did not include that. No.
Oh, okay, because I thought it did.
No, the TIF was for the new, um, I think they were gonna put a pretty decent-sized addition onto that building.
Yeah, yeah.
And, yeah, no, the, the equipment did not count. I remember them going back and forth with the Rosemary quite a bit. Last year, saying, you know, well, we didn't do the addition for the TIF, we bought this other building, and we spent a hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars on new equipment. So that was, we do get a report, or we request a report from everyone who has issued a TIF. I'm still waiting for the one from United, uh, United Lands. And Hardline, that's basically what they're, said that they spent a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars on new equipment.
Okay. Council, uh. So I guess, I guess at the end, for the Town Council made some of these questions, you know, copies of the TIFs, and it wouldn't be a bad idea just to separately send it, uh, to the United Lands as well, just to follow up. My question then is, we've got this generic letter, but, uh, the state, do we get anything back from the state at all officially saying, this TIF is null and void, we're not even touching this?
No, because the town has to vote on it first.
Okay, so we should have a follow-up?
There will be a follow-up, yes. The state said to, they sent an email to the Hardline, uh, folks and myself, saying, you know, the town has to vote on this, and then once we receive that, then we can, uh, nullify the TIF.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's official across the board.
Yes.
Not that I don't trust Hardline, they've been honest brokers and they aren't rowing, but, you know.
Yeah, no, and, and, you know, that was one of the things that I wasn't sure about, so we reached out to Kevin Kuros, um, at the state, and he clarified all that for us.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor? Pose. Reserve.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six, Review Discuss the Acceptance of the FY22 MVP or Municipal Vulnerability Program Planning Grant to Complete a Community Resiliency Planning Process that will examine the community's vulnerabilities and strengths, identify the priority actions to build resilience in, as the climate changes and authorized Town Manager sign all related grant documents, entertain a motion to vote to recommend that Council accept this grant.
Motion.
One second.
Ms. Rosie?
So the, uh, MVP is, um, it's municipal vulner, vulnerability preparedness is the, is what the MVP stands for. And, um, we had applied for the grant, so this grant, no money comes to the town, no money leaves from the town. It's the state directly finances a consultant who comes in and, um, leads a couple of workshops or a single workshop, you want to take all day and do it. To, um, work with citizens, Town Council members, planning members, um, you know, we're gonna start putting together an entire committee of, of individuals who will be part of this, um, and kind of having charrettes, um, you know, kind of public meetings where we will hopefully bring in more than just the usual players to talk about climate change and how, what the risks are to the town. And then as part of that, we're, the consultant and us will put together a, um, you know, kind of a report for, and a plan for where the town is at, what the future concerns are and things like that when it comes to climate awareness. This process, going through this planning process allows us to, um, that, I'm sorry, opens us up in the future for additional grants, uh, through the MVP, um, for, for projects. If there was, you know, drainage work, maybe that, that needed to be done, we could potentially get some funding for that. If there were dams that needed to be removed or, or fixed or anything like that, we could potentially get some funding for that.
Eric, can I chime in for a second?
Please do.
So it's also, um, it's usually additional points on, uh, traditional grants. So for instance, we just applied for the Park Grant, and had we already been approved for the MVP, we would have gotten X number of additional points.
Council Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're getting a grant for whatever amount is, did the town have to put any more mon, any money in it?
No.
Nothing from the town?
Nothing from the town.
Apple, Apple, or?
Nope.
Just to reiterate what Mr. Ramsay said, it's just, it's, we're not getting the money. It's gonna go, and they're gonna set up the workshops and stuff like that. I'm assuming it's the town's responsibility to set up the groups.
Yes, it's going directly to a consultant. I, myself, with the Town Manager, will set up the, um, who's gonna be part of the group as far as, you know, what members of boards and commissions, what members of council, what members of the public, what members of, you know, um, the Fire Chief and Deputy, Lieutenant Lavoy have expressed interest, um, you know, Health Department officials, building official, all of those people, you know, will all be part of this process.
DeeDee?
The municipal staff commitment, that would be all like volunteer among the people?
That is, that comes from, you know, within the, the town.
Within the town, so?
Yeah.
Is it added to your job at the point or whatever?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not an additional, they're not paying somebody?
We're not adding additional staff, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Council Steves?
I just wanted a quick comment, so I'm glad to see this is happening, because I've been, I've been asking at least two Town Managers to assist me. And, so, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Any others? All right. All those in favor? Pose. Reserve.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Don't say well. It's like you're walking out of here, it's okay. You never know what happens in these meetings, so.
You know, my, my poor dog's been home all day.
Oh, good luck to you. All right, thanks, Eric, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. Item number seven, Discuss Review the Proposed Green Communities' Projects, or Project Projects to Spend Down the Remaining $18,585.10 Before September 30th, 2021. Entertained Motion to Vote to Recommend that Council Approve the Proposed Spend Down and Authorize the Town Manager to Sign Any Related Paperwork to Complete the Work Through Energy Conservation.
Motion.
One second.
All right. I'm assuming, Ms. Dean?
Uh, so, uh, when Rosemary resigned in, uh, November, we called a quick call with the Green Communities people, Heather, I, oh, it's okay, I'm trying to keep my distance because I'm an eight-year-old who's not vaccinated, thank you. So we got a call in February, we talked about how the town has this Green Communities money that really needs to spend it down strategically, um, that there's another grant opportunity that will open up in October, that if we want to spend down the funds, regardless of whether we've, we've spent down the funds, um, you know, we have to spend down the funds either way. If we do, the added benefit is that we can then apply for another grant in the fall if we wanted to. And so we talked about potential projects, low-line fruit, we looked at different ideas, we looked at the AC for the, um, for the dais, we looked for the, uh, um, the windows, we looked at, you know, things that we all knew were, we, things we'd like to see happen, uh, but we couldn't find anything that was an easy grab. We went back to the environmental consulting, uh, company that's been working with us, ECI Energy Conservation Incorporated, and asked them to make suggestions, basic, and, Heather thought that Edwards Block was an obvious one, coming up, for instance, for the, um, precharging station, we were talking about how that additionally needed to get new lighting. And so they looked at the energy savings for that, for Edwards Block. We brought up the Dunkin' Donuts light that everyone said needed to get repaired and thought we could tuck that in. And then, uh, they suggested, because they're working directly now through the Green Communities, ECI and National Grid are working directly with the schools already on lighting upgrades through the National Grid incentives. So they suggested tucking in these last few thousand dollars for the school. So we put together this package, it's exactly, you know, they, they tailor it exactly to the amount that we have to spend down the grant, so that there's no extra money taken out, you know, but the town has to pony up. It should be a quick two-day job, then we can get done in no time, as long as we get this executed before, you know, September. So then, once we finish that, the state will come in, the Green Communities rep will come in, they'll, um, verify that we have spent down the money, finish the projects, and then that will open us up to other future potential projects, which we're already talking to ECI about getting estimates for. For instance, could we get the boiler, the senior center replaced, to start to move forward on upgrading the senior centers as a potential, um, you know, target for energy savings? That was one of the obvious ones that came out of some of those energy audits that they initially did, as part of the beginning of the Green Communities process. So that was, that well predates me, but you might all recall how that worked. And so, again, if we can just button this up, get this work done, then we can start to talk about other potential future projects, I would probably bring that to you either the next week, probably the first weekend, uh, the first meeting in September. All right. Hi.
Hey, Catherine.
Hi.
Just let me write this down real quick. Yeah, you're more than welcome to come up here, but.
You were voted on. Okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
I wasn't kicked out.
Okay.
Sign that for me? All right. Is it Council Steves?
Yeah. One, I know that, well, we, like, the, the month on, we got the school part, part of the funding grant, raising this platform, and one of the things that she noted was that it's some serious issue with energy waste which, you know, not just, not just replacing like inefficient light bulbs, but there could be some serious good, some good energy savings and money savings if they, if we looked at the schools and how they actually use spaces and things like that. I don't know, but I imagine, I believe, communities grant, probably something like that would be maybe the next round, or make communities grants, or something like that. But how much, how much of the, the lighting are you actually planning on doing? Because I thought, as you mentioned, I thought they were doing all the lighting in schools, Because I thought, as you mentioned, I thought they were doing all the lighting in schools, and this is the middle high school, right?
The middle high school, and they said, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, thank you.
So, there, they said that there were a few classrooms that they could target for this, yes. So, it's not a lot, it's literally just to chip away at the last of the funds. We looked alternatively, could we pay a couple of my payables? You can do ten percent for admin, but it's honestly easier and cleaner if we can just put it right towards projects.
Oh, I appreciate it, I agree with that.
Yeah, I appreciate it that they would suggest any, any projects that could be done there, so.
My, my question though is that I thought that we were, that the schools were already doing all the lighting.
Maybe they're carving out a small part to go towards green communities rather than directly through the National Grid incentive. I think that to them is the, the experts in this to advise us.
Okay, because I remember even back when the school was built, um, one, there was like a huge issue if you walked through the hallways, the hallway that's got floor and ceiling windows, and there were lights on even though the sun was shining.
So, not to cut off Counselor Steves, but I thought we had just approved some funds for that as well.
I thought you did too, yeah.
For, for the schools.
So, this will be for, this will be for, to complement the lighting upgrades that are being done directly through National Grid and ECI.
I think we did that.
And, and this should not conflict with projects that are being funded otherwise. And if they are, I would imagine then that would be an offset to either the school or the town.
Because it wasn't a capital project, it was, it was, it came last year outside of it. Some extra funds that we provided to the schools to.
They may have done just all the classrooms and not.
The elementary schools. It may have been elementary schools only, but, okay.
No, it was middle school, uh, I don't know if I made, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
It was middle school, high school, because we'd had that whole conversation about, hey, it's a, school's only built ten years ago, yada, yada, yada.
Right, right.
So, it was, but I think it was the classroom, so I don't think they may have done the whole school, like, uh, maybe some of the other areas, so.
So, possibly, so we, we released a big, big number, or the big number to save money on energy.
Alright. They use a lot of energy.
Can we just follow up on that, just, not that it's?
So, this is a ninety-five-hundred dollar value, so basically, we just wanna know what it's offsetting, if I agree?
Yeah, I, I thought we, I thought we approved something to fulfill, finish that whole process up. But, yeah, thank you.
The memo says right here, um, that National Grid and ECI are working directly with the school on energy upgrades using the National Grid incentives. That's what we approved at the middle school, high school. This would complement any of those other areas, so.
Okay.
I would think that they had that conversation about, this is what we targeted, and these were some of the areas that we didn't finish. And perhaps we could do it at the same time, use some of this money.
I understand what.
But, I, I mean, I would suggest putting it up and then having it clarified because of the time sensitivity of this.
No, I have no problem with moving it or recommending moving it forward, but I, I understand what this says, but I thought that the money we funded last year was gonna fit completely through the wall, so there was nothing left.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your insight. Is there some reason why we can't get the lights? I have had some residents contact, like, saying it's very dark now.
So, if, if I'm, those lights are working.
Well, they are.
Go down there, they have to be changed to LED, but they are, they are wired, because Garen Electric did the wiring for that. So, they are on, I think I have a picture of him actually on, so they are on. Yes, kudos to the DPW for getting that done.
One part of the problem, some of the comments that I've received is that the whole side of Main Street gets dark and nighty.
There, I asked the same question about, because one side's off, one side's on, and it flips back and forth. It had to do with energy saving, the time of day, it was all timed perfectly. Heather would probably give a better answer than I could, but I do remember asking that same question. I drove down it, and one side was on, one side was off, but I think it had to do with dusk and dawn. Alright, anything else, any other questions? Alright, all those in favor? Posed, four zero. Alright, discuss review of the economic planning development request to hire BSC Group Incorporated licensed site professional, LSP, using account number eight-two-seven-nine-zero, Quinabod Rail Trail Project Funds, for up to eight thousand nine hundred dollars to consult with the town to advance rail trail development and help position the town for grant funding. Entertain a motion to vote to recommend that council approve hiring the BSC Group Incorporated, and authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork to engage BSC Group services.
Counselor Kinnon?
Alright. Ms. Dean?
I hope the supporting materials or the memo is pretty explanatory. Uh, this, as you can see, this is just sort of, um, pouncing on opportunity. And I feel like, you know, one of our success as a staff is to know when to strike. Again, there was this sort of serendipitous conversation that happened down at the parking lot. Uh, yeah, Counselor Steves was there, Holly Cristo was there. Uh, we were all sort of entranced by this Mast dot special projects person who was saying, you can do this, you just got to get the pieces, you're almost there, you know? Do yourselves a favor, hire this, um, LSP, hire the one for Mast dot, Tetra Tech. Um, give me a call, I can give you all the advice you want. Well, I followed up and said, you can't really hire Tetra Tech, you're, they're yours, that's a conflict of interest, but that's a great idea. And so, we just kind of kept running with that, contacted, contacted BSC, and they gave us that quote. I felt that they would be the best, because obviously, they already got the, um, the, all the knowledge from working with us. And so, um, actually, no, I contacted, I contacted them and asked, do they have, do they have any licensed, um, LSPs on staff? And if not, can they make our recommendation? We had a call, they, um, asked us what some of the issues were, we went over it, and then they said, we'll get you, we'll, we'll get you a quote, we can surely help you, we have another person on staff who focuses strictly on sort of trails, rail trails, bike paths, that, um, this might be more than just an LSP specialty, it might be sort of, um, a, a trails expert that could help move along. Um, they heard our concerns about the Mast dots and middles, they questioned whether the designer we were using might have, um, not had as strategic an approach that they might have suggested. So, I'm not sure what's gonna come out of this, but I think it's the right direction. And then, it then, so that was the thirty-nine hundred dollars. Uh, and then what came out of the, the grant was just last week, as I said in the, in the memo, or two weeks ago. Um, now that I'm, I've registered through the EDA to be getting updates, uh, and so, I'm getting these, um, notifications about postings, uh, for, you know, notice of funding postings, and so, there are these new grants that are out, and I thought, this might be our big ticket for a rail trail. Um, the problem is, these are federal grants, you know, think about who we're competing with, right? So, um, they had these, um, the Build Back Better Regional Challenge, talked about, if you can come up with five to eight big projects, put, put them together in a big bucket, you could potentially be groomed towards twenty to a hundred million dollar regional project. I thought, okay, well, if Mast dot had a big project, we had a big project, and it was, it was way bigger than me. Then I sat on the travel tourism and outdoor recreation call, and they talked about, um, if you can, if you can justify, like I said in the memo, if you could justify how to use these funds for, for outdoor recreation. But think about who we're competing in those, it's the Alaska cruise ships, right? It's the, um, it's the international parks, uh, communities, you know, all of those. And so, um, I just wonder if we had an expert helping us, this might be a better chance for us to be able to position ourselves. Because I don't think I, I can, I mean, I can try, but I don't want, I don't want a chance, us losing the opportunity, because I'm an amateur.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sir.
I'm sorry, you sell yourself short, you know, I know amateur, you're a professional.
Thank you, when it comes to, yes.
Sure, please.
When it comes to applying for, for a federal grant though, right, the USDA, we, we did good, uh, you know, pat on the back for us. But I don't, again, I don't want to lose the chance of, if we could better position ourselves.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
I just.
Just a compliment.
Compliment, I'd say, short-term money for, for potentially long-term success. I mean, I, I certainly appreciate everything you do to seek these things out, so.
And, and another, just sort of serendipitous opportunity, when Eric and I were meeting with Karen about the special funds, uh, we were going over the accounts, I had no idea this money existed. So, I, of course, and then, you know, always thinking about how we could position ourselves. And when I saw that, my first question was, if we had any need for a potential consultant ever, would we be allowed to use that towards the rail trail? And she said, oh yeah, I would say that is a good purpose, and so, I feel like we're, we're ready. And I hope Counselor Patrana feels like this is moving us in the right direction.
Counselor Patrana.
I do, thank you, Craig, for what you're doing and for doing this. The question that I have is, a couple of questions, um, in task one dot one, I see the hourly rate's a hundred and fifty dollars if you break it down, and task one dot two, the hourly rate is one fifty-six twenty-five. Why the difference? And also, just to go one step further, we're paying a hundred dollars for reimbursable expenses for twenty-four hours and two hundred dollars reimbursable expenses for thirty-two hours, only just a difference of eight hours.
So, I would just imagine, similar to an engineering firm, well, they are an engineering firm, you know, where you've got your different principal versus your whatever level of professional, the LSP must just be cheaper. And then, they might see, uh, you know, more need for reimbursable costs with the other one, or they may just proportionally tack on reimbursable costs.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Counselor D.
Thank you, Counselor Steve, for you. First, on the second page, I don't know if that matters, they don't have the zero behind the nine? Eight-two-seven-nine, say zero.
Eight-two-seven-nine-zero.
Fund available, that's how.
Funds available.
Lift the page. Behind it.
Oh, okay, funds available, account number?
I don't know if that matters, zero.
Yeah, it's on the second page.
Okay.
Funds available, count number, oh, okay, no, I think she told, did she tell me to use that number?
Well, on your.
She, oh, Karen reflected the after the set, the fact, and said she put a zero in front of it, so thank you, yes.
In front of it or behind it?
And which one is it?
It's, well, you have, uh, the agenda says eight-two-seven-nine-zero. And then, this, you also have that on your memorandum.
Yes, okay, so let me clarify with, oh, no, no, I have the, I have it right here.
The second question, the, so you, you making sure that person you hired, you have a good background?
Uh, so, I feel like we can, um, we can rest, we can rest assured, we can be assured that they are, um, uh, going to work well for us, that they're very capable, based on the work they just did for the urban agenda and the local rapid recovery planning grant that they're doing for us right now. So, you know, I feel like that stands on its own. I was very impressed with what he's done with us so far. So, it says that the account number is the eight, eight-two-seven-nine, and I think Karen said to put a zero, but I will verify with her that it's in front or behind, yes.
Could you, okay, so maybe after the vote, if you can do me a favor and send it to Yvonne?
Absolutely.
Um, I'll just put when I respond to her that there's a question on the account number that, uh, Ms. Dean will get back with us.
Okay.
Alright, any other, Counselor Steves?
Yeah, one more question. I noticed in the proposal, it makes reference to CMR PC's phase one, uh, ground study. Where does that stand, but it also makes a pass around to a phase two study. Is there actually one being organized and, or would ESI, would ESI be willing to do such a study?
So.
Yes.
So, we have CMR's PC working on our behalf to get the phase one site assessment done. I have been asking for an update for a month. Part of what I'm hoping is that these people can get to the bottom of what's holding things up. Um, or if it's nothing, if it's nothing more than just getting Mast dot to sign the proper paperwork, maybe they can help that along, right, as a worker. You, no one can pursue phase two funding until they've had a phase one.
Yeah, I see.
We've been warned that Mast dot will not go into phase two with us, but what it may do, the, I've been trying to do the digging on, if you'll recall, your attorney advised back in twenty nineteen that, um, MOBD, the people who do the tips, um, they, they had environmental insurance you could potentially purchase back in the day, that they had said we should look into, whether that might cover us for contamination. So, I've asked MOBD, they've got their lawyers looking into it, they said they're still looking into it, so, you know, my next follow-up email I had, I wonder if the brownfields legislation that went into effect in the late nineties, nineteen ninety-eight, sort of replaced the environmental insurance. And what it does is, it kind of, it opens you up to potential funding if you have done the, whatever required site assessments, um, and, you know, and, and then they'll potentially help you with mitigation, prevents you from being sued, um, through the super fund, right? Um, so, that's just what I'm starting to, to glean, but I'm not sure if I'm correct.
You good, Counselor Steves? Okay, any other questions? All those in favor? Posed, four zero.
Yay.
Can't force you onto this one. Alright.
Thank you. You're welcome, I'm excited if we can make any traction, yeah. And thank you for the reference to the rail trails conservancy website. Yeah, it's a good resource, so I will subscribe to them, I'll do it.
Very hopeful. Alright, agenda number nine, discuss review of the timely expenditure waiver to apply for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Mini Entitlement ME for FY twenty-one, request for proposal, RFP. Entertain a motion to vote to recommend the council approve submitting the waiver request to the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, and authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
Watchable.
Okay.
Counselor Kinnon?
Alright. Ms. Dean?
I apologize for not sending out a request for proposal through, no.
Thank you, welcome. It's hard to do, I think.
I don't think we need this, I'm at like sixty percent on the grant, but I just didn't want it to be a technical issue, so I'm putting it through just in case.
Any questions? Yeah, Counselor Steves?
Yeah, just one quick question, I noticed that, I'm saying the same agenda item, except that I run from. That it mentions the, uh, this is the CDV extension from Main Street, right?
No, this is a new, oh, the, it's the, the.
Where is that?
No, you're, you're right, we're asking for the, the waiver on the grant for the Main Street to be eligible for the next grant application. They say like the previous grant years that you're constantly managing at the same time, or, you know, one's gotta be at this point, one's gotta be at this point, it's always a juggle. And last year, we had to ask for a waiver because things were slowed down in Central Street parking lot due to the rain in twenty eighteen, et cetera. So, this year, things were slowed down a little bit because COVID, but we're just about there. We should be at the threshold at the time of application, just.
Okay, when I, when I was, okay, so what I was checking on, is I, when I was looking through it, it talks about completion in December of twenty-one, but the track says December twenty.
So, the, the what says when?
Uh, the, the project for Main Street.
The Main Street project says twenty?
Yeah, there's a chart in there that has a bunch of dates in it.
Oh, and I missed, then I must have.
And that one says twenty-twenty. It says twenty-twenty and other days before that, all of it.
I was trying to type it off. Yeah, no, slowly.
But I, I figured all of the twenty-twenty.
Oh, yes, the last two, the last two should have been twenty-one and twenty-one. Yes, good test, thank you.
Anything else?
I need an editor.
It's alright, it's two zero, so. Anything else? Alright, all those in favor? Posed, four zero. Alright, last one, here. Okay, before I go, um, I, I go on to this agenda item, I did discuss with Ms. Dean the other day on this agenda item. We changed this agenda item, though it's the same, basically, the same, it's the same boilerplate and all that. What we did was, we wanted to clarify and make sure the council knew, and those watching, that the town council had voted back in June on this application. Just wanted, it was almost like a refresher on this agenda item. And so, that we asked, actually, Ms. Dean came up with this language here, and, uh, let me know if I'm doing this out of order, because what I was planning on doing was reading the original agenda item, and then asking for a friendly amendment to that item, or just, should I just read it off as what we came up with now?
Well, the agenda item is not a motion.
Right, okay.
So, you make the motion based on whatever your agenda item is.
I just wanted to make sure there was.
Be what you want to be.
Right, I just wanted to make sure it was a clarification that we didn't, we put an agenda item on, on the website, and then all of a sudden, we changed it, right, okay.
So.
Just wanted to clarify.
To Counselor Steve's point, right. Technically, you don't even have to have the motions on these agendas, I mean, that's something the council technically has done as a process, but typically, it's just, we're gonna talk about park grant, and this is what we're doing, and then motions flow from that. I think the council and the town manager says, this is how we'd like the motion to go, so that's the suggestion. You're not, you're not, you're not falling to anything, as long as the topic that you're talking about is relevant to that agenda item.
Yep.
You don't have to take up that agenda, or motion or anything, so you don't have to do that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, that way we don't have any questions down the road. And it is general to the same, the original agenda item. Alright, discuss review of the motion drafted by Town Attorney Greg Corvo, KP Law, accepting the resolution for the Parklands acquisitions and renovations for Communities or Park, P A R C, grant, which the town authorized applying for on June seventh, twenty twenty-one. Entertain a motion to vote to recommend that council adopt the resolution dedicating the land for recreational purposes, appropriating one hundred percent of the funds, and authorizing the town manager and CDBG coordinator to file for the park grant application.
Motion.
Second. Ms. Dean?
Uh, everyone saw the technology letter from, uh, the state. Promising, in my opinion, I think. So, I'm hopeful that if we're putting all of our ducks in a row, that we are being, uh, highly considered for the grant. Uh, what I read from the grant guidance was that you don't have to approve the resolution until you're being awarded the grant. Although I know towns do go out and accept the resolution all the time in advance of the grant. For instance, uh, town meeting forms of government, they'll just do it at their annual town meeting, their spring town meeting, in advance of the grant application. So, talking to Karen today, she's very comfortable with the language, uh, talking with, you know, this is consistent with what Melissa recommended, right? She said, it's gonna be a two-page resolution, you're gonna have to read it, um, it's going to raise one hundred percent of the funds, uh, but you will not spend likely any of it, uh, you'll probably end up, so what you'll do is, you'll go out for bonding for a hundred percent of the funds, and then you'll get reimbursed seventy percent of the funds. And what Karen said is, you may not touch any of it, because you may end up just raising it from free cash or wherever, and you may never have to use any of the pocket, and then it just gets, um, closed out, and that's it, grant's done. So, it's a two-year grant, this is one of the first steps towards, uh, being potentially awarded.
Yeah. Perhaps we can get clarification. Sure. On, I understand the whole part, so, are they gonna recommend going out to bond for this, is that first?
So, it says within the language on section D, it would be the, the last page.
Yeah.
Appropriate the sum of, and then it says.
To borrow.
Yeah, for the treasurer, yeah, it's definitely the treasurer approval, how much authorized to borrow some, to pursuant to, you know, et cetera.
Yeah, okay.
On issue bonds or notes, therefore, you know, et cetera.
Alright. No, I, yeah, so we're not taking free cash and locking that up into anything, it's just a, a bond authorization. And at such a point, if we do get the grant, and it's seventy percent of the five-eighty-nine, so, one-eighty-nine, next year, free cash comes in, you could allocate that or proceed with the borrowing.
Makes sense. It's a good way to do it. Just no, no, no different than when we talked about when we did the airport, and we allocated that grant match, and then.
and then came back and it said, we don't need it.
That was nice.
Yeah, that was, that was nice.
Any questions? Any questions besides what, uh, Counselor Joe had had? All set, all right. Thank you, by the way, this, that's a very long, if you look at the back of this, this is a pretty long summary of what's going to have to be read per se, so. You're welcome, I'll be back there, but, uh, anyways, I just wanted to thank, thank, uh, Ms. Dean for all the hard work on that, due diligence, so. All right, nothing else, all those in favor? Opposed? Four zero.
Thank you.
Your motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Four zero.
Sorry for my phone ringing.